Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Plainfield Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. I'll call the meeting to order and start with roll call on the left.
June Gagney.
Carla DeSardans.
Lindsay Jocelyn.
Katie Lee.
So we do have a quorum and there are no alternate members to appoint. Moving on to the public hearings. Item A 2315 SP of Strategic Commercial Realty Inc. requesting special permit for earth excavation on properties located at Zero Norwich Road. Assessors Maps 10, Block 4, Lot 36, 37, and 38. Map 10, Block 4A, Lot 13. Do we have someone representing the applicant?
For the record, John Feliciane, Boundaries LLC, represents Strategic Commercial Realty. Thank you for continuing this from last month. We had a lengthy discussion and there were several items that were raised by both the public and the commission. And the commission was kind enough to outline at the end of that proceeding what the areas of concern were to be addressed. And we have done exactly that. So there are a series of submittals, some on October 2nd to Town Staff, some on October 5th. And some of the information I'm going to go over is a reiteration of what was previously said on the plan. But we did make plan revisions to address the concerns raised during the last public hearing. One of those items was relative to traffic and levels of service for the intersection of the site driveway in Norwich Road. To that end, we engaged Heskey and Associates, traffic engineers, to review the plans, make an assessment of the site, visit the site, and generate a report for us. That report was filed as part of the submission on October 5th to Town Staff. So you should have a full copy of that report in your files. I'm going to just hit the highlights in the summary of that report. During that evaluation, the average daily traffic volumes were obtained from the DOT at 4,600 vehicles per day, with peak hours in the morning of 258 vehicles and peak hour in the afternoon of 475 vehicles. To remind the commission, our proposal was for maximum 60 trips per day, which is governed also by the railroad license for crossing to get into the site. That crossing limits us to 50 truck trips per day. We added 10 to that for employees as a margin of safety, but 60 trips per day is what we received approval for. Based on the report, just wanted to read the last couple of paragraphs. The capacity analysis was completed for the proposed site driveway intersection. The analysis indicated that Norwich Road approaches will operate at a level of service A during peak hours. And the site access drive itself will operate at a level of service B during peak hours. And those are results are included in the report. We have reviewed the sightline demonstration drawing provided by your office. The available site distances are an excessive 770 feet looking to the north and 675 feet to the south. Some removal of vegetation is required across the site frontage to achieve the site distance looking to the south. The available site distances exceed the minimum required intersecting site distances for a single truck unit for 85% speed to 85% odd speed of 48 miles an hour. Recent Connecticut DOT counts indicate 85% speed of 48 miles an hour in both directions. Norwich Road is posted at 45, and a copy of the DOT's speed count is included in the report.
Could you try again?
Based on the relatively low volume of site-generated traffic, it's my professional opinion that the local road network will not be significantly impacted by any traffic associated with the proposed earth excavation operations on the proposed site. The existing site driveway is properly located with respect to available site intersection distances and properly designed to accommodate anticipated driveway volume. And then it is signed by Scott F. Heskey, P.E., Manager of Transportation Engineering, F.A. Heskey and Associates, and now is provided to the commission through submittal from our office. In addition to traffic, there were concerns raised regarding sound and dust mitigation, particularly La Pearl Avenue. And so to that end, that's right, perfect. To that end, we've made some revisions to the plan. The area or the limits of excavation was previously 20 feet off of the stone wall and continued 20 feet off the property line at 54 La Pearl Avenue in harmony with your zoning regulations. The 20-foot separation in this area is really kind of artificial because we also own the property to the north. And the limits of excavation, as previously shown, were approximately 240 feet from those property lines and from the one property line that extends further backwards about 140 feet to the limits of excavation. So we're well beyond the 20-foot requirement in the regulations. However, based on the concerns raised by the residents in this area, what we have done is we have moved the limits of excavation 50 feet further to the south to relocate that limit further away from those residences and boundary lines. And we've also designed this to have a 10-foot-high earthen berm along the whole northerly edge of the excavation extending to the west edge of the excavation. That 10-foot-high berm will be 40 feet wide. It'll be seeded with ryegrass, and that berm will be constructed with the topsoil and subsoil stockpiled material as a site strip for excavation. So that will remain in place during the excavation until the site is being reclaimed. The only spot is a break in that berm right here at the edge of the driveway that currently leads out to La Pearl Avenue. We did leave a 20-foot gap in that berm for emergency vehicle access. I'll go into that in a little bit more detail in that part of the discussion. But we did leave a 20-foot gap there to accommodate emergency vehicle access, and it is gated. In addition to the concerns raised regarding sound and the dust, the other bigger ticket item associated with that is hours of operation. Our original application requested hours of operation from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. Monday through Saturday. We have reduced that request to 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Monday through Friday and 8:00 to 12:00 on Saturday with a 30-minute window on either end for employees, fuel equipment, and to form any pre-assembly needs to be done. So we reduced hours of operation significantly. That is detailed or is included in the notes and narrative on Sheet 13. The area we were just talking about, the earthen berm, is depicted on Sheets 8 and 9 in the revisions noted. In terms of the emergency access, the other item that was requested was identification of a notification plan. We have also submitted to Town Staff, and you should have in your files, a narrative explanation of how those emergency notifications can be made. There are two parts to that. The emergency access contact information is added to Sheet 14, and that includes the town, the police department, the fire department, the public works department, the back and urgent care center. All of the contact numbers for emergency services are listed on Sheet 14 directly in the plan set. That wasn't necessarily, I don't think, exactly what you all are looking for or the residents are looking for, but we added it as a secondary measure. What we have done is the operator here, Strategic Commercial Realty, has other sites throughout the area. On some of those sites, they conduct blasting activities. When they conduct those blasting activities, there is a notification that goes out. So they do this in three ways. There is a service called Call Multiplier. It's used to send text messages and voice messages to anyone who opts into the notification process. In addition to that, they maintain a specific outlook contact group for each site. So an email can be generated for notifications as well. And then in addition to that, notifications are posted on your Facebook page. The first one, the call multipliers, is an immediate notification via text or voicemail. And again, it is an opt-in situation. So what I would suggest or propose that we can do is that we have a list of notified letters as a result of the public hearing process. We can offer to notify each of those same folks by mail again with the opt-in information to get on the call list or onto the call multiplier site. So we'll be able to collect the information from those who want to be notified and notification can be established. That notification can include Ryan or any of the Town Staff that you may want to have included. So in the event of an emergency on site, the neighbors will be or can be notified on an immediate basis. With respect to the last item, I believe that was a matter of interest or concern. There was a question of clarity of the groundwater and the well situations. There's not any new information regarding that, but I wanted to just clarify and reiterate what is already on the plans and the measures that we've gone through to ensure groundwater is protected. The regulations, we installed a series of 12 monitoring wells throughout the site. They're depicted on Sheet Number 2. In addition to those groundwater wells, we also took observations during the wet season. Those are depicted on table in Sheet Number 5. Based on that information, we generated two things. Groundwater profiles that are shown on Sheet 11, which is in two directions across the cycle to cross-section identified on the plans. And we've also depicted the groundwater elevations and flow direction by colored contours on Sheet Number 3. It shows that the groundwater pattern moves from north to south away from La Pearl Avenue to the southern part of the site. So we did go to great lengths to make sure we knew exactly what the groundwater was doing. Like I said, 12 wells, the observations, the profiles, the contours, and we maintained the excavation within five feet above the groundwater table for a couple of reasons. One, to ensure that we can reuse the property for agricultural purposes, and two, to make sure that it ever further developed, is adequate separation between the water table and the ground surface from installation of septic systems if anyone would ever construct homes on this property. That's not our intention. Our intention is to reclaim the property for agricultural purposes. The soil profile information to do that is contained in the plan set. That was faltered based on the Town Engineers' initial comments, where we added additional measures for subsoil and deeper layers of topsoil to restore the surface. Those were the items that were raised at the conclusion of the previous public hearing, and I believe that we've addressed them with the revised plan and submittals that we've made. If you have any other questions, Commissioner.
So this is a public hearing. So if you have a comment or question on this application, this is your opportunity. So just step up to the microphone, state your name and address for the record, and what your comment is. Welcome back.
I'm John Feliciane, 1039 Norwich Road. Question.
Yep, so address it here to the microphone, and then we'll redirect.
I appreciate the opportunity to have another time to public venue during the hours. To bring the first point, I walked in, he was talking about in regards to the sound that we were questioning. That's right from the north. I mean, the first one, he brought it up. It doesn't address my property line. And I know since then, when we discovered, I've got the thinnest barrier on the whole road.
So could you just point where you are?
Well, I'm somewhere, is this the top lot right there?
Yep.
They're doing?
Just below the corner right there.
So I'm somewhere right here.
Lower. There.
Here?
Go a little bit more.
Across the tracks?
Yeah.
Okay. But I mean, there, I literally got a, it's probably 10 feet of trees, that's it. It's in leaves falling. It's gonna be, there's a field right there. It's literally my backyard. I would just ask that they would include, if you could please have them extend that same courtesy to us down there, even if I sort of sound like speaking to myself. I mean, I literally, I think I've got the thinnest, I literally admit I've been spent. So that's not gonna, well, we is great that you guys did that, but I would ask that they would do that further. In regards to the groundwater, was any testing done outside of the, was there testing for what's in the water? None? Are you guys doing any monitoring, pretesting, quarantining, or is none of it? I'm sorry, is there any?
That's okay.
Is there going to be?
No, that's okay.
Is there going to be any kind of actual ground testing? Do I have to spend all the money to get pretested?
So testing, like what's in the water?
Well, we have the old Superfund side of the street. From my understanding, from what you all said, the water runs from north to south, right? Is that correct? And that water they're referring to is literally my backyard, you know, 20, 30 feet from my house. 20 feet. It's not far. So I know that back from the Superfund era, that that water's running now, was running there originally, whatever's in there. Now, I'm not a scientist or anything, but if it was running from that site back then, it was running into that field because that's where the water flows, right? So what, I'm not saying that anything bad's gonna happen. I hope not. More than likely, I would assume, we talked to the gentleman over here before, that probably isn't gonna affect the wells at all. But I don't know that. I came out of fracking land, and believe me what they said and what happened, very two different things. We had to get tested before, during, after, and good luck proving anything if anything happened. We just want to safeguard our, look, I have a well, clean drinking water. I don't want to get cancer for my kids. You know, that, just normal, good neighbor stuff. I would ask the community if you guys could have them extend the sound thing because that's, they're gonna be an extra for, we said, correct, it's a long, one, two years in the top section first, that's gonna be the longest period.
So I will redirect all your questions, and I'm developing some of my own based on your inputs, so we'll get our answers.
They're gonna be in our section for the longest period. Out of the five-year, we're estimating, we're saying probably over two years or something in right then, working with my backyard. I would significantly, please respectfully ask that you would have them build a barrier in my backyard too, so we can enjoy the quality of life when we decide to move to Plainfield. We like Plainfield. I'm not planning on selling my house. We're gonna ride it through, thinking the factors through. Just want to safeguard it in place, you know, obviously, and I'm not insinuating any of this. Again, like I said, they have the right to do the business, how the business, the capital is to go for, based on, but we just want to protect ours. So that's all my question. We don't know what came down in the 70s, '78, '77, prior to that, and what kind of heavy metals and it was fine. There's all kinds of nasty stuff that was in part of that Superfund site. And they're still, they did a, I was reading the EPA report from last year, I think it was a five-year study that they did. It's still not clear. They said it still won't be done. So what's in it, what's flowing in there, it's still in the back, it's gonna seep in there. I mean, if they start digging up the fields, it's just a question. That's all. What's in that dirt? Because if that's what's coming from the Superfund site, that's flowing into that field where they're today. And whatever was in the 70s there, we're talking about stuff that stays around for a generation or more. That could be disturbed once they start digging 15 feet down, and we don't know what's gonna be in the air then, we don't know what's gonna be in the water. It just, we don't know. And that's my concern. It'd be nice to have a little more solid understanding of that. I like, you know, I remember last time these gentlemen said that they weren't doing any kind of baseline testing on that. And I don't mean just lead. I mean like, you know, benzene, vinyl chloride, the list, you know the whole list of stuff that they found on the site up there. I'm just curious, you know, if we have a baseline and if some adverse, unfortunately did happen, we'd have some kind of recall or some understanding over it. I think that's all I have, and that really is the only question.
Okay, very good. Mr. Feliciane?
Yes.
Yeah, absolutely. So am I correct that the site we're discussing is not within the zone of the EPA of that Roundfield site that he's referring to?
That's correct.
Okay. And that there is no fracking, blasting of any kind? This is going to be digging to no deeper than a depth of 15 feet?
That is correct. The average depth is eight feet, the max depth is 15 feet. And we are, again, there's nothing that we're doing that is in the groundwater. We're maintaining a five-foot separation. So anything that's there is there. We're not touching it, we're not disturbing it, we're not excavating into it. We're not bringing anything to the site, we're removing from the site. So there's nothing, there's nothing that we're going to do that changes what's already there or what's naturally occurring on the property.
When we're talking about the 10-foot berm with the 40-foot-wide grass, how will that impact or change any of the water flow that's coming from north to south?
It doesn't.
Okay.
It doesn't. We're just, we're stockpiling material along that side, and everything that drains to the south is still gonna drain to the south. It's not going to impact anything, repeat any lower groundwater from the site.
What is the first phase that we opened up?
The first phase is actually Phase A, which is, I'm gonna, you don't mind?
Yep.
So Phase A is, it's actually completed in seven phases, and none of them exceeding five acres. That was in the original discussion. This is not a rule. There wasn't a gift for sign.
Yep.
Do you want to change the page?
Oh, do you have them all posted?
Yeah, they're all.
Okay, he's got it up here, so he can.
Well, can you see one? Give me a second, and I will tell you.
Thank you, Ryan.
Can you give me Sheet 5, Ryan?
Yep. I can find the cursor.
So Phase A is essentially from this area to the north. And what will happen is, the site will be accessed from Route 12. They'll have a ball road that goes up. Excavation will start up in this northwest corner, and they will be working their way out. So starting here, working their way out and down through Phase A, reclaiming behind them as they go until they get to excavation area B, which is a smaller portion of the site and centrally located part. Once that complete is completed, then they'll move into excavation area C, which is all the way to the west. So it starts up in the northwest corner, moves its way out and down. The excavation for Area A, which is all of this, is anticipated to take place in a two to three-year timeframe.
So when we're talking about the buffer of 10 feet that's near the railroad, how close is the excavation line going to be to the railroad there?
It's actually, I'm pretty sure it's over here, just because I can see it. So we have maintained the 20-foot separation to the right-of-way line for the railroad. The tracks are in that, and that's the separation as required in the zoning regulations for excavations. There's an additional setback that equipment can't be stored within 100 feet of the property line, and that's certainly the case. The area the gentleman was referring to was in this area, and it was between two pockets of inland wetlands. There's a small area here. I can speak to the applicant in that we would be willing to construct that same berm in that location between those two wetland boundaries. The rest of the properties that front Route 12 are buffered by the natural wetland buffer that exists. We're obviously not going into the wetlands, disagreeing anything in those areas. So, but there is a small gap where there is a space that is between delineated wetland areas that would be to the rear of the property that is full. So we could extend the berm.
And then the berm itself will also provide a level of dust control and noise control because it'll have that absorber factor.
Absolutely, absolutely. 10 feet high, 40 feet wide in any weak wet state.
Was it Phase 2 over there?
This is still an excavation area A, but it's the, I believe it's the second or third phase of that. That area, the berm would be constructed when the topsoil is stripped from the site that's needed. So before the actual excavation activities, the berm would be built.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. This is a public hearing. If there's anyone else with a comment or question regarding this application, step up to the microphone, your name, address, and your question.
Hi, there. I'm in Block 1041. I've had some time to sleep on this after the last meeting. I'm not sure if I have some comments. And some of the things that I've found that are really unsettling to me, property damage is the first one. So when I first moved out there, I moved out there in a quiet corner. I like to hunt, I'm an entry hunter. You go forward, it's all kind of, landfill behind me, and I'm just recently retired. And I can picture myself sitting out in my yard, mucklers and birds, or the wind blowing through the tree, but hearing clanging and banging, smelling, vibrations on the ground, dust particles rolling over. This is not very good. This is not a good selling point. If they're here for basically to make profit, we're here to supply that for them. We're giving up our property for them to use that, and we're getting out of it. This is not good. Not a good selling point. If I would come to this area and looking around again and seeing, oh, nice house, what is going on? Oh, you get a building something back there? Oh, no, this is dirt there. It's gonna be going on for three to five years. You gotta live with this for three to five years? And you're not gonna be compensated at all for any of it. Not good. Not good enough. This is not the way you take care of your seniors and your company. I was just down by American Inn, suggested, I was going down there. And I thought there was a fire because the wind was blowing like crazy, and it was just dirt blowing around every night. The mental stress, the tolerance, endurance, all of this is gonna affect my well-being and everyone else's well-being in this area. Not good. Not good for you. I read an article today, excessive noise in a series, this is from the Connecticut Noise Related Division Regulations, Chapter 442. Excessive noise in a series is a serious high hazard to health, welfare, and quality of life of citizens in this state of Connecticut. Exposure to certain levels of noise here results in psychological and economic damage. That's exactly what's happening. Then we have the other thing about safety. I've been on 395 quite often. I went up there last week. There was an accident. There was a dump truck. I went up there in the winter to help my father pack up and move things up. There was an accident, another dump truck. The last few times I've seen accidents on 395 is dump trucks. So we get people that are gonna be paid by the hour. No, they're gonna be paid by the delivery. They're gonna be paid hop, move, quick, quick, quick. They're gonna be driving people's cars, they're gonna be cutting off a ton of people. There's gonna be a very dangerous situation with them. And the roads out there right now in this area is really bad from when I moved in 20 years. Nothing left. I say I'll move all the way, good five minutes every day just to get through. The wildlife habitat is all being removed. Geese flying over. I have permission from Jennifer Rana, you go over there and hunt. I have to run over here, palm tack there, got permission. I'm an entry hunter, I know every inch of that old land all over there. You go over there. Anyways, all this wildlife habitat is being removed, turkeys, coyotes here, fisher cats, owls, geese, turtles, frogs, everything being removed. That's not good for the nature. And then, you know, all the unknowns. You're talking about water. Water falls from north past the houses to south. And, okay, it's gonna go through a filter that's supposedly not gonna be lowering the water levels. I just have to have a new well for the 2020. You can't guarantee anything like that. I mean, yeah, it'd be nice if they wanna put it right. You can't believe if we have water issues, they'll pay their way. They'll pay for any issue that we have. That would be nice. And I just can't believe this whole thing is well-being for me, it's not gonna be really good. Company's here for blocking at our expense. I really don't like this. I wish it doesn't happen at all. That's what I have to say.
Thank you. Any other comments from the audience? Yep, step up, make your comment, or ask your question and name and address for the record.
Hi, yes. My name is Chris Clark. I live at 1035 Norwich Road. And I can't help notice that there's been a distinct lack of respect for the environmental concerns regarding this project. It was stated that no environmental survey was done, which I feel if I can, considering the Lewis warehouse when it was reviewed, was found to have spayed with toad and blue-spotted salmonella on the property, all of which are critically endangered in the state, all of which are known to migrate up to 500 feet from the wetland environments, which they live, all areas that are proposed to be dug up and filled with bulldozers and crap in our backyard. Can we look at the gravel pits that already exist in our area down at Butts Bridge Road in Canterbury, down at Tire Box, and say we've done enough damage to the environment? Do we really have to keep rolling for it and destroying every piece of land within sight? Is that what you guys wanna leave for our pits? I know it's not what I want, safe.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions on this application?
I have one question, Art Gagney, one question for the commission. What's to prevent this project, after getting started, from changing from an RA zone to an industrial zone on the county street? an RA zone to an industrial zone on the street? Within a year, they changed from industrial, everything around them is residential. That's my question.
So, if an applicant wishes to make a zone change, they have to apply for that change and then it would go in a special permit process? And then the commission would have to determine if industrial would be appropriate for that site? So, that would be a completely separate and apart process?
So, nothing stops it?
They can apply.
Except, right?
Correct. They can apply and then the commission would make the determination whether or not that would conform with the town's plan of conservation and development and zoning regulations. Thank you for that question.
Would we?
Hold on. If you have a comment or question, you do gotta step up to the microphone so we can get it on the record. Name, address, beat, beach it to it, but you're next. Thank you.
Darren, for that, yeah. I'm just writing off a little bit over here. I said earlier that, you know, I, I do spend a lot of time thinking about this since last meeting. And I actually considered, I, I romanced the possibility of selling the house while the market's up and I got a hundred thousand equity. But, we don't really wanna sell a house. But here's the thing, I did, I did a chunk of reading too, and everything I've come across generally stating that property values generally fall 30%, 35%. I don't know if that's a numbers number, but that's an accurate metric. But everything I read, that everybody who went through this in the states, that was the thing. Now, my thing was we sat back and go, okay, so if it's five years and we go back to our culture, then we have to ride it out, but then, you know, God knows what else is gonna happen with the markets, you know, and that's a whole different subject. But if I lose, that, that is, that 30%, 35% is a weird, is 100% on equity. And I don't feel that that is a fair business thing. I bought a house, it's an investment, it's a thing, it's real estate. And I bought it and I feel, not knowing, if I had known this was happening, I wouldn't want to buy a house, claim for lease on it. So, I would ask that you guys would take that into consideration because our property, that is my property. I have the right to, I'm living on my property. And I don't think some shit, I have the right to diminish all my equity if that is the case. And everything I've read throughout the different states and that, I feel, I hope them to see any real metrics on that. But I know the property value, I don't have to sell it. Whatever has happened, they dropped significantly, just like John said, nobody wants to have the backyard. I understand, rightfully, this is my, and forever thing, but it's still gonna be five years, five years from now where, you know, that, that hole in the ground. I feel like I gotta attach 22, it's like, if nobody wants to sell it from now, you're gonna buy it. I mean, my interest rate's under 3%. I'm not gonna, nobody's getting that from a backyard, so at least we're gonna sell it, but now, but I don't sell it. And what the previous states and people have complained in that was a valid thing and it was fact, for those people anyways, that they lost 30%, 35%. Probably, like I said, that would really wipe out all the equity in my house. And that would, my investment would be brought to nothing. And then I'd have to sit for, I don't know how long, they're not five years. I could have to sit for 10 years from now. I'm in my mid-fifties. I don't know if you're, you know, if I am. But that's all, you know, I, I also agree with the gentleman with that. I know, you know, again, they have a right to do the business, but if you're right on the border of something, what you do, you know, affects other people, then, then that's true, take it into consideration. I appreciate if it will do with the noise and to make some concessions to do that. I really do appreciate that, actually. But I still have that on my mind, so I do. I, I don't, I don't know what's been thought about with that or anything like that, or companies related to that. I mean, it doesn't, I'm not expecting that to help us self-financially, but they did, that literally, they would make it on that. And then I'm starting a house from, you know, five plus years, maybe years after that or whatever. I, I mean, told, I got so, I'm, here's, I sell it, gives it all, and now it's way bigger than me and half my family. At some point, I was a big seller thing. Honestly, maybe something smaller for me, like, I can't do that if I have no equity in the house, starting from ground zero. That's all.
Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Yep. Andrew Fisher, 54 LePereau. So, I was late, sorry, catching chickens, um, which that's gonna be super fun because they're really gonna be spooked once things get started. So, they were saying that they're gonna build a, a berm?
Correct. It is 10 foot high, 40 feet wide.
Okay, cool.
With grass.
Okay, so is it 40 feet from, because I, like I said, my, everybody might be close to their backyard, but my bedroom window is 60, it's under 60 foot tall. I did the little survey marker from their marker. And they said they could wear 25 foot from their marker. So, it's the 40 foot from their marker or from the 25 on the outside?
Could you point out the buffer change in the berm so that she can get a clearer picture? She's one of the LePereaux.
Yep. All right, can you go back to sheet eight, please?
I'm gonna say I apologize for being late. I'm gonna answer.
Oh, no. I was almost taking myself.
So, I'm just gonna use the pointer. So, the house right, right to is this one right here, 54 LePereau. So, from this side of the house to the front side of the berm is 140 feet.
Okay.
And then it's another 40 feet to the other side of the berm.
Okay. I got you. So, you're, all right, cool. I have more reference. You were right, that was awesome.
We like clarity.
Well, I was, it was, it seemed like that area right there was my neighbor's yard, but that's their property, that space back there. Once I went and looked at it, because like I said, coming to the meeting last week, we didn't know what was going on. I mean, I didn't even went out there and walked everything yet. So, um, but yeah, um, another question, did we talk about operation time?
Yes, they have made a request to modify, to change to 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM, Monday through Friday, Saturday, 8:00 AM to noon, no Sundays, no holidays.
Okay, question. Do any of y'all have a gravel pit by your house? Anybody? What's the operation hours?
For 20 years, yes.
What's the operation hours for them? Because we, I had a neighbor, because I went around, I got a list of everybody who was notified for last meeting. And I went around to some of the neighbors that were home that weren't on that list because they didn't actually touch it, but they were gonna be impacted, and talked to several people. And one of the dudes, like, it was a Saturday, well, actually, I think it was Dave, my neighbor. He, he went around on the Saturday to all the gravel pits and none of the gravel pits were working on Saturday. So, that's what I was wondering. Any of the gravel pits, why y'all work on Saturday?
So, they're variable. Ryan, correct me if I misspeak, but in general, the applicants request hours of operation, but depending on what their needs are, they may not operate their full hours of availability because it depends on what they have for work. So, there's a level of variability that happens. So, while they're allowed to work, they may decide, you know what, we got everything we needed done Monday to Friday, we don't need to operate on Saturday. Why pay our employees overtime if we don't have to?
Okay.
So, so there is variability.
That's an option. My question is, do any of the gravel pits have restrictions on working on the weekend?
I think in general, we've approved Saturdays 8 to noon. I don't think we've ever allowed Sunday operation.
In residential zone, no. Industrial zone, yes. It is pretty typical for 8 to noon on Saturdays.
Yeah, so we've, we've kinda standardized what this committee.
Well, I mean, you said in the residential zones, no. In the industrial zone, yes. We are absolutely residential zone.
Industrial zone can go 24 hours a day. There is no time limit.
Oh, I got you.
Yeah, so the restrictions are in the residential zones.
I got you.
And they can, they can do, um, they can go later on Saturdays, but typically we're restricted to a new time on Saturday.
Okay. So, you're saying that the other ones can typically, you know, but y'all restrict them? So, across the board, this is their, their basic thing? So, like, we're not gonna find different things, different ways?
There are, too. There were some gravel operations in operation prior to zoning in the 70s. So, you may find them operating longer hours.
Gotcha.
Because they are not under current regulations.
No, I'm talking about, yeah.
But in general, the standard for the.
From what I understand, like, five have popped up in the past couple of years.
For the 18 years I've been on this committee, Monday through Friday, 8 to 5, Saturday, 8 to noon has been pretty standard.
Okay, cool.
We live in, we live near three. And they're different times. During the week is during seven, one starts at seven. We have a little bit of Saturday traffic from another one.
So, it just varies. And also time of year, too.
Gotcha.
Because obviously if there's.
We turn twice.
If there's three feet of snow on the ground, you're not gonna find much activity during that time of year.
Like I said, I really, I know how it goes.
Yeah.
Another question is that, did anything get done? Because one of the things that I was hearing is they're going to take the gravel up and go to this side of Plainfield, wash your gravel, whatever, and then haul it back across Plainfield to American Industries to be processed and not collect?
Non-American Industries, they're not associated with here.
Okay, okay.
Could you, could you detail, um, just give that brief summary, the, of the traffic, the level of service, the study assessment, and then also describe the route and the companies you're affiliated with, just so there's no mixing of understanding?
So, strategic commercial realty is no affiliation with American Industries, or more construction at all. The strategic commercial properties affiliations with Ross Materials. The Ross Materials sites exist north of this site on Route 12 and also further up in the department. So, the material that's excavated from this site will not be processed here, will not be washed, will not be anything that will be loaded on trucks and taken to a site that's already approved for, for processing. So, that would be the case. So, the traffic largely is going to all be leaving the site to the north to go to their other facilities for processing. We did engage a traffic consultant who did do a study and reviewed the proposal as well as levels of service for Norwich Road. And the conclusion was that this was not going to generate a significant impact or create problems with site distances. That was reviewed as well and that's detailed in a report that was submitted to the commission. But we did engage FAS and Associates to do a traffic study. They're traffic engineers who have submitted to this commission for the last 25 years that I've been in this. And they did evaluate the site distances, they evaluated the driveway intersection, and they evaluated the levels of service for Norwich Road.
Gotcha. So, it's not gonna be going this way and then missing crisscrossing that? But what level of traffic would have the impact? Because come on now, there's a lot of, the day after last meeting, I almost got running off the road, the Route Road, with a truck, with a dump truck coming over, I seen him speeding into a city, coming in the Plainfield. The light over there going underneath the interstate that says no right turn on red, we like open up with the, it's, every morning.
We do not have the authority to do anything with people's driving styles or driving quality or ability. So, unfortunately, we can't speak to that.
But you don't charge drivers, is what I'm saying.
Oh, great, but that's a traffic enforcement, that would be a law enforcement issue. We can't.
Where, let me ask you, where are our cops? Because I ain't, never seen one, not one. I've been here over six months, I ain't seen a school police officer.
You would have to contact the police department to discuss their patrol patterns.
Okay. But I'm worried about the impact on the traffic and on the, and, and on the school buses, student kids and stuff. I mean, I just don't understand how they could say it's not, it's gonna have some impact. You can't say it's not gonna have any impact. Because our roads are already, you know, impacted as it is. If you're adding to that, I'm sorry, there's gonna be some impact. And you can't, you know, and if you would have been like, oh, it would have up to 5% or so, that's realistic. But sitting there saying, no impact, come on now, we know better. You know? If, if I got a bucket full of water and there's change in there, if I throw one penny in there, you could say no impact, but there is an impact. But if I throw 60 in there, it's gonna impact things. It's just, I mean, I don't know. That's how I feel about it.
Oh, but you just adjust the impact?
And, and I just have one additional question, since the hours of operation are being shortened.
Yes.
Whether that could reduce the amount of trips per day? So, although the railroad allows up to 50 per day, given the shorter working hours, if that would reduce the amount of trips per day?
I don't, I can't say that will reduce the amount of trips per day upon average day. Obviously, on Saturdays, we're not gonna be nearly the same number of trips. One of the things with regard to the impact, and if I misspoke, I apologize. The, you know, clearly, whenever you do anything, there's something. But the 60 trips per day that are being proposed in this application will not have any significant or noticeable impact on the 4,600 vehicles that travel Norwich Road every day.
Sure. And when we talk about, um, level of service, A versus B, the DOT has a scale that goes to F, right? A, B, C, D, E, and F. So, when we're talking about the peak, it would still be level service A.
Correct.
During off-peak and then level service B during peak.
Nope. The level service A is maintained throughout the duration. The level of service B is with respect to the actual site.
So, when we're talking about levels of impact, the additional traffic was not sufficient for the DOT to downgrade what the.
That's correct.
Service level would be.
That's correct.
Just for clarity. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah, go ahead, John. And then, and then you'll be next. Thank you.
Does the, um, traffic guidelines differentiate just between total change during vehicle number? Or is it also taken into account vehicle type?
I am going to defer that question to our chapter.
Oh, thank you.
It's a good question.
Thank you.
My name is Uleb Mahmood. I live at 11 Broad Street, Plainfield, Connecticut. Uh, yes, we do, uh, take into account the type of vehicles. We assume 100% truck, trailer truck, um, vehicles for secondary truck, which is obviously not 50%. A number of those will be employees. We assume 100% trucks and we also analyze it as if the max amount of secondary traffic was exiting and entering the site from both directions. So, we analyzed the scenario, which was extreme, and still got very, very good level of, level of service and do not change the level of service adversely. I'll answer your question.
Thank you.
Delia LePere, I live at 383 Norwich Road. When you say that these trucks are traveling up Plainfield through 12, are they going past my house on Route 12, 383 Norwich Road, top of the hill, Hopkins Hill?
So, they would be heading to the Hopkins property?
That's like oil pipelines.
Okay. We already have a massive amount of oil tanks, propane tanks, diesel trucks coming in for loading and unloading fuel. We have, um, home heating oil companies coming in day and night. We have propane tanks coming in day and night. We have tractor trailers coming in just to fill up. We have campers coming in to get propane. We have a maximum of probably 60 to 70 vehicles a day going up to LLC, bulk LLC at 383. They're not gonna impact it, 60 more trucks a day? I mean, come on, that, that lane, that road used to be quiet. Now, with track, I mean, school bus, you know, slow road. But now you've got all these tractor trailers, you've got kids flying, it's a blind corner and you can't see. I mean, I'm in my driveway and I can't see around the corner. So, I'm taking a risk every time I pull out and if somebody's flying up, you got tractor trailers coming in this way, you got tractor trailers coming in this way with oil, gas, propane, and now we've got more trucks coming through our way? That's ridiculous. I mean, I have a posthumous house. What do you think that vibration's doing to my house?
Anyone else with a comment or question on this application?
Craig Savage, 34 LePereau. Last one, a couple of questions clarify. Last meeting, is there, is there something that's what gates, you know, they were, they were not used or was it used that way? Or not used at the time?
So, there's an entrance on LePereau that is gated and not being used for regular operation, correct?
Correct.
Okay. When it comes to the railroad crossing.
Gated as well.
That is gated as well?
Yes.
Not, not the railroad use.
The railroad is gated, that's a requirement of the railroad license that's in the record.
So, the owners.
It's, it's not, it's not automated, it's like you would see a cattle or like you see over, you know, a container truck. This is, this is construction gates, they're not, it's not.
So, it's not changing the railroad crossing itself?
It's not like a spinning thing on the.
No, no, no.
Because they don't control that?
We're gates came up.
Yep, so the property itself is gated.
Correct, security. Should we fueling of the site? If so, is there a pad for that?
So when it comes to the truck maintenance and the fueling of vehicles, is that onsite with a fuel tank?
It's onsite by fuel truck.
Okay, so there's not an actual fuel tank?
No, but the, but the best management practices are outlined in the details on the plan set as well as requirements for spill kits and how they.
So there's not a pad or a truck, are a tank onsite? It's a truck that comes in to fuel as needed.
Correct.
So when the trucks are fueling, what area are they over? Are they over the driveway or are they over an absorbing or impenetrable surface? What, where will they be fueled exactly?
So they will be fueled typically in the location that they're being utilized. And there's going to be a central location that's going to shift throughout the excavation. They're not gonna, they're not gonna walk machines, you know, six, eight hundred feet back to a central spot every day. They'll be parked in the area that they're working and that'll be where the fueling occurs.
Because it's not a stationary tank.
Right, it's not a stationary tank, it's by truck and they will be filling the machines by truck. Yes, BMUs are identified.
And that is all dictated by MSHA, right? The Mining Safety Hazard Association.
Trucking company, and we couldn't wash the trucks on asphalt, but it is under.
I have seen that and understand exactly what you're saying. Washing the trucks is a different, washing is governed differently. But just to reiterate, if you're correct, this is, this is all expected, licensed, and monitored by MSHA.
Okay, and those reports are all publicly available, correct?
I'm sure they are.
Can we have that posted?
The MSHA rule?
No, where the reports are accessible to the public. So if you can get that information to town staff so that when residents have inquiries, that information can be easily found. Because it may be publicly available, it's not always publicly accessible, meaning hard to find. So if we can get that access and info to share with residents, I think that's important.
Fifty years old La Pearl, emphasizing public and community to talk about emergency access. What constitutes an emergency? Question on that before connecting.
So they did clarify that that access would only be used in the event of an emergency where the primary access was completely one hundred percent blocked. And in the event of something like that, they have an emergency notification system that they can utilize, that residents can opt into. So in the event La Pearl had to be used in an emergency, and that means full lockage of the.
Fire, left order, left order. At least.
Yes.
It's not a, they actually gave it another rule?
No, no, it would be emergency, primary access is blocked. That was the exact verbiage that would be used. And I'm assuming primary access blocked for significant period of time, not just twenty minutes, a train is on the tracks.
Correct, and I want to clarify that a little bit, is that, that is correct. It's for an emergency situation for either access by emergency vehicles or evacuation by staff, things like that. It doesn't mean that if the tracks are blocked for a period of time, we start trucking up the other end. It doesn't mean, it doesn't mean any hauling goes out of the Pearl. It just means emergency services that are required in that system.
Hypothetically, I mean, it's not a, for like a foreman's pickup truck or something, you know? Would you open the, would you open the gates to a pickup or something? It's gonna be for utility by, for a service truck.
They are not permitted to use the La Pearl access, period. So if you see a truck go through that access, then please report it to Ryan Bray, the zoning enforcement, because that'll be a citation.
Just for clarity, let's just say there's a train to run and it's gonna be twenty-four hours.
That would be an emergency.
Or if there's a fatal accident on Route twelve and Route twelve is shut down and can't get out. The staff, you know, workers coming through.
It's an emergency evacuation.
To kind of sum this up, if somebody's using La Pearl, it's because somebody died by one of them.
Because there's no gates, railroad gates, my first question. That opens up all kinds of waters. So, you know, you're talking about fifty, sixty trucks a day. Technically, that's a hundred trucks because tires load and they were coming in pulling up. Plus a next rack, it's just a matter of time, let's face it. Now, some of the railroad cars that has this material, hopefully it's gonna support the cost of the one here. And my last question, after five years, can this whole fit five or percentage?
They can. And we would be back here for another special permit process where they would have to explain the progress they made and why it would be taking longer than five years to complete. So we would be back here, yep.
Three to four.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions from the public?
Andy Fisher, fifty-four La Perla. Has anybody taken, I've seen some long trains. Did they have trains that long enough that would block both entrances? And if so, what are contingencies for that, if they have an emergency like?
So that would be outside the scope of this application. That's something you gotta take up with the railroad or police if the, you know, that's, that's outside our scope. We can't.
You know, because if there is an emergency, like, they're gonna bring helicopters. I mean, they've got plenty of space and whatnot, but I didn't know if he thought about that. I don't know if they come here or if they just came in to do this or whatnot. But like, that was just something I was thinking about because I've seen at least two really long ones, you know? Seen more railroad trains than I've seen police, yeah.
Around here, you might get a train that'll hold just five minutes or so. We don't have trains like out in the Midwest where they're, they help up for a couple hours.
Yeah, yeah, but it's like, you know, like, if it's a really long one, it comes through. Let's say there's not yet between one of the trucks and coming up here and it's long and it blocks it down there. Just wanna make sure that they take about that ahead of time, too, so that they have a convention to cut up. Because when, when stuff goes upside down.
Ladies and gentlemen of the audience, if you could please keep your conversations outside because this is a public hearing, we have a recording, and we want to make sure that the comments are heard and not the background noise. So really appreciate, you know, if you have a comment, please step up to the microphone, but we want to respect the speaker. Thank you.
You know, it's just when things go upside down, especially when it's with big equipment and, I mean, trains and stuff like that, things can go really bad. So I just wanted to make sure it's something that they worry about, too.
Thank you. So that was part of the emergency plan, talking about when access would be moved on it. Is there any additional clarity you want to give on that particular issue?
I mean, I don't have any additional clarity on that. The matter is that the railroad is approved for crossing, we have a license from them to do this. This is not strategic commercial realty's only venture with the railroad. They have rail signings on other locations, they work with the railroad all the time, this is not new to them. So it's not that, you know, somebody's coming in and decided that I can cross railroads for the first time. They have crossings on some of their other sites, they have signings on their other sites. And this is not new, and you had experience with it.
Okay. Any other comments or questions from board members? Any other comments from staff?
Just one final comment?
Yes, please.
Just final comment. The regulations allow for this type of use in the zone. I believe the plans that we've submitted address those regulations and any requirements. I believe that we have done quite due diligence to address the concerns of the public and the commission. And I would ask the commission to reconsider this application.
So it's hearing, there's any other comments, I'll entertain a motion on the public hearing aspect.
Oh, maybe we should close the public hearing.
I have a motion to close the public hearing. I have a second by John, all in favor of closing the public hearing? Any opposed? Okay, public hearing is closed.